Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee Workshop for March 14, 2017. If we could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, adds, deletions, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir, there aren't from staff.
Uh, Council Mokel?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion and a second by Council Whiting. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Now I'd like to call on any citizen that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. On an item not on the agenda. Seeing none. Moving ahead. Item number four, which is our workshop of our 2017 city work plan. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for a little historical basis here, on February 14th, we had a strategic planning workshop, which was designed to start the process for providing the 2017 work plan for city staff. At this point, we're looking at generally those topics that the council identified as being those things that they wanted staff to concentrate in. We are now looking to essentially dive down, if you will, into those particular topic areas as, as council would like. Some of those might need a little more explanation or a little more direction than others. But what I wanted to do initially was to kind of get our minds thinking in general to a little more strategic purpose by asking some questions based upon our mission statement.
And as a reminder for everybody, the City of Shakopee's mission statement is to provide the opportunity to live, work, and play in a community with a proud past, promising future, and small-town atmosphere in a metropolitan setting. So when we look at that, when we look at that mission statement, essentially what I wanted to do is to try to drill down in that statement, ask you some probing questions to get some idea of what you think this means, and how then we can take that and bring it forward into our strategic plan for our long-term issues and at least for those issues in 2017, our short-term issues for city staff. The first question that I think is important for us to look at is this idea of community and what it is that defines a community, what it, what it is that makes someone want to be a part of community. And so I kind of throw that out to you. What are those things that you believe people move to a community or people enjoy living in a community? What's important to them? Any, any starting places that you might think of?
Kathy?
Um, well, for me, I can go back to why I moved to Shakopee. And for me, it was a downtown. I wanted my kids to identify with a town and not just a suburb. It was schools, and of course, for us, that meant Catholic school. Availability of homes. At the time, it was a, not a great market for buying a house. There was five buyers to every house, so it was availability of homes. And amenities.
What do you mean by amenities?
Um, like community center and what types of attractions. That was a huge amenity for us. And then lastly, it was transportation, because we had to commute at that point. So how were we going to get to work?
Anyone else?
Mike?
I've been here all my life, but there's no reason that I know of.
Well, what do you like about, what do you like about Shakopee?
I think I'm really the wrong guy to ask that, because I've never been anywhere else. I mean, I don't know what I'm missing out or what I have that I, you know, we've got a hospital here, which many towns don't have.
Yeah, absolutely.
We've got the courthouse here. Many towns don't have the-
A county seat.
County seat.
What about, you've lived here all your life. If we turn the question around, you've met a lot of people that have come here. I'm looking at the second word, says attracts people to Shakopee. You are already here, so what, what do you think?
But see, that's the reason I'm the wrong guy to ask that. I don't know what attracts them, because I'm already here.
All right.
You know, it takes somebody that's moved here to answer that.
Right, that's fine.
Well, I would say, you know, it's a safe community, public safety, availability of jobs, and affordability of the, of what I could afford for the house at the time. I did like the, the riverfront and, you know, being that close to nature and the downtown area.
So natural-
Natural environment, yep.
None?
Matt?
Well, I think, I think there's different strokes for different folks, and if we think we're going to sit here and figure out what each individual wants in their pursuit of life, playing and, and living, working, and playing, we'll be here all night and we'll never be able to appease all of them.
Well, but that's not the purpose of this.
Okay.
The purpose is to get you thinking strategically. In other words, it's very easy-
Well, I was getting there. I wasn't done.
Fine.
The, the one common denominator that most people look at is either going to be location and, and long-term financial planning, their own. When a business or a resident looks at the history of, of a community that they're looking to move into, and they're looking at affordability, they're looking at what has been their, their taxation rate over a period of time. Is it a community that has massive spikes and drops, where they really don't know what their payments are going to be, or is it a pretty stable community? That stable part in the past has been very important. Location is always important. A lot of the folks are moving out of the big inner cities and trying to get away from that, moving out to Shakopee where they're still close enough to get to them amenities up in the cities, and they're not far enough out to where it's, it becomes a deterrent. So we've been blessed with location. Some folks like to stay in their house and they really don't want to be bothered. Other folks want to take advantage of the amenities Council Mokel talks about, or, or the environment that Jay talks about. So it's different folks for different, different strokes for different folks, but really, the common denominator in all of it is, can they actually live a life here? Is it affordable enough? Is it stable? And does it have the basics?
Okay, Mayor?
Um, when coming to the town, unlike being already here, I think, I think folks generally look at access. And since the-
You mean like transportation?
Yeah, access, transportation. I mean, 169, the Bloomingdale Ferry Bridge, you know, our population has more than doubled since then. And I think they've come for better, come for better access. I think if it's a younger family, I'll agree with Council Mokel. The school district is one of them. Also, I put down downtown. I think people like that. You know, I keep on bringing up the, other communities don't have downtowns. I think people connect with the downtown and relate to that. They value that. I think business opportunities, like Matt said, whether it's existing businesses or opportunity for new businesses. We've certainly had an explosion of businesses in a couple cycles via the economy in the last 20 years. I think a safe community, one that's not always in the news. You know, you read about communities that are in the news, then you know, flip the coin over, who's not in the news? Not that it comes to mind, but when they're thinking about coming to Shakopee, they're not going, I guess you're right about them two months ago or a year ago and-
Crime capital of Minnesota.
Right.
Murder capital of Minnesota.
I think a safe community. I also think taxation does play a role in the affordability of it all.
Yep, okay. All right, good. So, you know, that's essentially when we're looking at a community. And, you know, I think the amazing thing is, is that you ask this question in most communities, and this is essentially what you're going to get. You know, this is essentially what makes a community. This is why people want to live.
Mr. Reynolds, before you move onto the next slide-
Yes, sir.
We as, we as council members live in our community and have lived here mainly for a long time. You are new to our community. What, what attracted you here, as someone that's been here in the last two years?
A job.
I know the job, but-
A fiscally conservative government. I initially did not apply to Shakopee until a friend of mine said, "Look at their budget." I did, and immediately I was interested. The, the trail system in town, I used to be a runner, I think, or my body parts tend to fall off and less and less, but really appreciate the, the trail system in, in the city. Love, love the small-town aspect of it. I grew up in a town of 4,500. My wife grew up in a town of 800, if you count the cows. It was, it was, it was almost like coming home, just walking in the downtown street. So, you know, for me, yeah, it was, it was, absolutely was a job. But, you know, initially, like I said, I, I wasn't interested until, until frankly, I saw the budget. Budget is what hooked me.
Oh, I know you came for a job, but also there were probably some other factors, as you mentioned that-
And the challenge, I'll be honest with you. A little turmoil when I came on board. I like the idea of challenges. If this was going to be a, a moderate, do the same thing every day type of a job, I wouldn't be here.
Can we add on the bottom one, where it says financial planning? It's not only personal for the business or the resident moving here, but it's also the financial planning that the city does, so we don't have them spikes.
Yep, yep.
All right.
Okay.
Pretty good, Lewis, sir. Continue.
This, this, this question overlaps a little bit, but there, there is a little bit of a difference there. So what does it take to get someone to live, work, and play here? So we define community, but, you know, we have this motto, we want people to live, work, and play here. And the second piece of that is, is do we believe that all of those are equal? I mean, you know, should we? Is it right to favor someone that lives here over someone that works here or someone that just plays here? Or do we have them all equally? You know, just some things to think about, so, you know. What's your thoughts, first of all, on, on, on what does it get someone to live, work, and play here?
Kathy?
I think it's recognizing our diversity, our, and diversifying, so in, in two different ways, because-
Diversity in, in how?
Diversity in jobs we offer, because we look around our community. I, this was something I think that you brought up in your interview process, when we were interviewing you. You talked about the diversity of our industrial park and-
Tax base.
Tax base and-
Jobs by industry.
Yep.
You, you'll look at that, that, that wheel, wow, that's great.
Yep.
You know, that, that kind of makes us resilient. All of our eggs aren't in one basket. We don't just have all manufacturing. We don't have just entertainment. We don't have just healthcare. We've got it all.
Right. Be the Iron Range in northern Minnesota, where 80% of it is all-
Yes, sir.
-out of the mines and they go like this.
That, that, and we really should brag about that by today, and it probably needs to be updated since that was put out there. But, but what a, what a great, what a great wheel.
Well, and I think that brings me back to the 50 by 30 that we've been doing at the county level, and bringing to the groups of what we did is, if we want 50% of our population to, to work here by 2030, what types of industry are we missing? And that was, one of the biggest ones was finance. We really don't have a finance place here. Those are the kinds of jobs that are leaving us. So, so, but I talk about diversity even in our, in our community, in the population. I think that's a plus.
You talking about the ethnic diversity? You're talking about just the different ranges of ranges?
Ethnic diversity, yep. Because we offer more. Because it's ethnic diversity in the people that bring their businesses and things for us to, to do. So, and I think it also takes highlighting what we already have. And putting, investing in what we have.
Is that a hiccup?
Yeah, that's all I had, kind of.
Mike?
Well, if I had to rank them, I'd say the people who live here and pay taxes are number one. You know, do, do we care about them first? Yes. People that come here to play, they're in and out, you know. We're, sure, we want them to come, but they're not our top priority, you know, because we are so diversified. Working here, yeah, it's another one that's ranks in there. So if I had to do it, it'd be just the way it is, live, work, and play in that order.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a lot to be said, at least, you know, from, from, residents' perspective, is that, you know, if we're paying taxes here, we should have a, a little more say in, in what happens here, and we should be valued a little higher. I mean, that's, that's one way of looking at it. You can certainly look at it in other, other respects, but, you know, I think that that's one that most people would say taxpayers do have.
And I wish more would say something. I mean, you, you know, most of our council meetings, it's a ghost town. Go to a school board meeting, it's a ghost town, other than when something's happening. So, you know, get involved. I mean, we can't get enough people to go on our boards, you know? They get, get, get involved there and get their voice heard. So, you know, there just needs to be more of that.
Josh?
Yeah, and I, and I think, going to the living here part of it, you had mentioned the ethnic diversity, but we also have demographic diversity of young and old and, and in the middle, working class to retired class. So we have that broad range, so we, we can't forget that. Well, we also have a, a very, very large tourism industry here, and it might not directly come into our tax base, but it gets a lot of money generated in our community that people stop and buy gas, they stop and they break down, they might go to Matt's shop to get fixed. So there's a lot of money coming through the community as far as businesses in, in, in the tourism side. So that'd be a work to the play, but it also affects the work side of it, too. So I think we can't, we can't forget those parts of our community, although I want to disagree that if we ranked them, you know, people paying the taxes is number one, but there's also a lot of businesses paying taxes, too. So, can't forget that.
All right, Matt?
I would rank them as they're written, too, except I put a little bit less on the, on the work than Mike probably does. And the reason for that is because in my mind, when a business comes to Shakopee, they're, they're not necessarily coming for all the amenities. They're coming because they see a, a market that has potential of disposable income that they can capture in their product or service, okay? It's what businesses do. Without profits, they go out of business. It's just that simple. And so the free market working the way it's supposed to. So I would put the priority on, on live, for sure. And obviously, these businesses are paying taxes, too, and they want the infrastructure so people can get to their business, and they want a safe environment so that their consumers are, are able to keep coming back. The play portion, there's multiple kinds of play in Shakopee. There's pay-to-play, that's a joke, by the way. But you have the, like Jay said, you got the outside tourism type play. Then you have the, the local play, whether it's sport, rec, sports at, at Park and Rec. And then you have the private sector play. Unfortunately, I, I have very few opportunities to play in my own community. The racetrack was closed down. There is no shooting clubs. So there's not a whole lot of things that I like to do, you know, and a lot of people in Shakopee like to do it, and not just them, too. So the one thing that concerns me with government is they try to create that play environment, which is very expensive to do, and it doesn't serve the whole market. So to me, the play portion is, is more of a, of a private function, along with the, the business function. At least it should be. And it really is dictated by who wants to use it, who wants to pay for it, and is there a market for it.
So your, most of your purpose, focus is going to be on the live?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, much like your diversity of industry will, I think, I think we do have a good balance of live, work, and play. I didn't, I didn't think of the aspect of ranking them, but I can comment on them that I think that in the last 25 years, 20 years, people have wanted to come and live here for many of the reasons we just listed on the prior slide.
I mean, you have the most explosive growth at one point.
Right.
Clearly, people wanted to live here.
And with work, we've had some, we do have some wonderful long-term businesses that have, that are here that have grown. And the businesses that have come in the last 20 years, why are they coming? I think two reasons. I think is, number one is access, which I brought up before, and whether that's a rail, whether that's enhanced access of 169. I also think that the availability of vacant land for those businesses to, to develop on has been a, a big part. Valley Green, Dean Lake, some of the older land that, like where Amazon is, that's all, you know, you look now, 20 years later along Fourth Avenue, that's all, pretty much all filled in. That availability has driven that workplace. I'd like to think that they came for the availability of a workforce. And that's where you get that back to the live part. I think the play is twofold. I think we brought up tourism. I don't think we really capture enough of that. 10 million visitors a year that just come in for a day and leave. It'd be great to be able to get some holding power out of that. Play, I think for a resident here, you can wake up on any day off and go, "What, what do I want to do? There's a lot to do." I think we do have some entertainment options. They have changed. But those are available and, and, and people do them, and I think that's a good thing. And I, I also don't think we leverage that enough, but I, I think it's a perfect environment versus another community that we like, we used to be, just more of a bedroom community. I think we have much more balance 30 years later than we, than we did have. Councilmember?
I think when somebody decides they're looking at moving to Shakopee, the first thing they're going to do is they're going to look out and see if they can afford to move to Shakopee. I mean, it really, realistically, when you go shopping for a house, you're going to see, "What can I afford?"
Right.
Right? So they're, they're looking at, "Can I afford it?" That's, that's number one. Number two is, "Do I want to be there?" Where do I work currently? You know, if you're working in Elk River and you're living in Minneapolis, you're probably not moving to Shakopee. You're probably moving to the north side. So I think where they work has a, has a role on whether they want to, to move here or not. And sometimes their work might bring them down here. As, as for the comments about all the job growth and business growth, you know, wherever you put out the free handouts, that's where the people line up. That's just the way it works in this world. And that's what Shakopee did. And that's why we had the explosive growth of jobs and, and businesses, because there's a lot of incentives going on. We don't have the workforce to supply to these businesses now, and, which is creating another problem. So inherently, government has created a problem for itself, which I'm sure government's going to say they got to step in and find a solution for it.
Great problem to have, though.
At somebody, always at the taxpayer's expense.
Great problem to have. Mike?
You were saying to capitalize on the play item. That's basically the job of the company that's doing the recreation. Valley Fair, they do their own promoting. We can help them out some, but-
Right.
You know, Canterbury Downs, I mean, same thing. They promote themselves. We're not going to stand in their way and throw a roadblock.
No, and, no, I didn't mention roadblocks. I said, "How do we leverage that?" Like River South is to get you really here to spend a night or two nights. Don't come, try to make it more of a destination thing. Don't just come for the day. Try to tie that in and, and have them rather than filling up with gas and having a cheeseburger to stay the night because there's, there's more to it. Or I can't, you know, if you go to Chicago and you take in some of their arts, you can't do it all in one day. You got to take it in two days. So Kathy?
I'll add to that, too, because when you, when you think about the people that come and drop their kids off at Valley Fair for a day, what's keeping them in Shakopee? Are we driving them to our downtown and, and, you know, sometimes, they drop their kids off at Valley Fair, most of them don't even know it's Shakopee. They don't know that they can come down and they can spend money in the downtown and walk around and shop. They're dropping their kids off and going back.
The people in Southbridge don't even know where downtown is.
But my point is, we as a city can do things to entice people to come downtown, and that's where maybe it's putting, you know, flags or, you know, the lighting, or whatever it is that makes them realize that they have already, they've hit Shakopee and they're welcome.
Is this what you wanted out of this question?
Yes, sir. Again, the whole point of this is to kind of stimulate your thinking on these long-term issues, so then when we go to our next phase and start drilling down to the tasks that you're preparing for staff, we, we kind of work through this and you kind of have a better understanding.
Well, I think on the live part, I think the Shak, Shakopee has done a good job in, in previous years of developing, planning for, you know, developer-driven of housing stock, new houses and that. And we've had a little lull here, but I think that'll pick up. I think in the work environment, we have, plenty of jobs have expanded with or without city help, and also in the play area and the community parks and rec enhancements, you know, that, that's the thing. So I think we have, as a city, worked on a, worked on all those areas in some degree. Matt?
I want to comment on this, this theory that if we spend money, people will come and, and shop at businesses. I disagree with that philosophy. I, I think the underlying simple philosophy of a free market is that any business, whether it's downtown, Southbridge, Marshall Road and Veerling Drive, whatever business, I'm not picking on an area, it's up to that business to have either a product or a service that the consumer wants. Two things make a business successful. The business has to have a product or service that the consumer wants, and the consumer has to have the money to be able to buy it. We could put Gold Line Roads downtown, yeah, a bunch of people come look at it, but they're not going to buy at these shops if they don't have the money to, to buy. They're not going to buy if it's not the product they want to purchase or the service they want to purchase. It's just that simple.
I agree to disagree on that.
Well, that's, that's a fact. I mean, you don't go to Target and just buy something for no reason, is it?
That isn't a fact. I mean, there are reasons that people come into your downtown, and it's not necessarily because you have the, the only good and service. Some other person might be selling that good and service, too. They want to come because they have that relationship. And they could, they will spend more time if you make it enticing for them. And you put it in, in an area where they're willing to go and walk around and invest in.
There's a difference between getting someone, someone to an area of town and getting them to purchase some, but, something from a private business.
If you came down to our downtown, you'd want to see that we've maintained the roads and the parking lots, and that might drive another restaurant or two to come into town that might want to say, "Hey, I want to stop there for lunch." And hey, right down here, they've, they've made the trail connection now so that we go walk on this trail and look at the riverfront, or have those things that we can make changes to that, that could help influence that without just handing out money to businesses. This is not what we're talking about. We're talking about maintaining what we have.
I'm talking broader. I mean, we started out years ago with the, when First Avenue went right through the heart of downtown. The downtown said, "There's too much traffic."
No.
So, so a lot of money was spent to put a bypass in. Now we don't have enough traffic. We said, "Oh, we need a park where we can have weddings and all these things right across." We put a park in in Hubert Park. Spent $5 million. Oh, that's not, that's not working now. Okay, so let's put in some housing on top of commercial. Let's do block three and four, tear it all down, spend lots of money. We're going to put the old folks up here, they got money. That didn't work. So just throwing money at things is not the solution.
Well, we're not going to, you know, Hubert Har, Park has worked. That is getting rented. They do have weddings there, a lot of them. And, you know-
We still have a problem with our downtown, correct?
What?
We're still talking about our downtown.
Because you haven't done anything in 30 years. We are still talking about the same problems from 30 years ago that we're doing now.
This is, this part's coming up here in a little while.
Yeah, and let, so let's, let's kind of just take a step back for a little bit. And I, from my perspective, I think you're all right to- Yeah, and let, so let's, let's kind of just take a step back for a little bit, and I, from my perspective, I think you're all right to a degree. I remember talking to a Friday breakfast meeting in downtown, and somebody was complaining about parking. And I said, okay, I go, there's a lot of parking here in downtown. And, and, and much like Matt, I said, parking is not gonna save a faulty business plan. If you don't have something that somebody wants to buy, I can create a thousand parking spaces and it's not gonna make a difference in the world. It is about that product. One of, one of the case studies here in, in Shakopee itself is Badger Hill. Badger Hill is in the middle of an industrial section, there is no reason for anyone to be there. On a Friday night, you're lucky to be able to find standing room. Because there's a product that people want to be there for. That being said, I think there's a lot to say about having a, a downtown that is presentable, and that, that you want to be proud of as well, and, and, and that does take investment. So, that being said.
Mike wanted to get in here.
Yes, sir.
Well, the, the parking deal, you know, we've got a lot of parking, but people don't know about some of it.
Yes, sir.
You know, we, we need to get proper signage. You know, we've, we've tried, I don't know how much it's doing. You know, as far as Badger Hill, I mean, they got a great product, and they do their own advertising. I mean, they, they bring them in from everywhere.
We're a convenience society, all of us here at this table are guilty of it. We drive through the parking lot, try to get the front row parking. You know, we've got a parking lot over here, but nobody wants to use it because they have to walk a block or hang a block or whatever, they want to park right there.
But if we were going to Target, that would be close for us, and we would park there.
Right.
It's all a matter of perception.
Or actually go to the, I always laugh because I've been thinking about the, the great Minnesota get-together, that we park our bus and we spend hours walking around, not near our car, walking around all afternoon, buying individual products that we like, right? That we can't seem to figure out how to get anywhere else at one time, and I, I find that interesting. But to have a parking problem or a perceived parking problem is actually, I feel, a good thing.
There are worse problems to have. All right, you know, you notice we've got a proud past, and we really do have a proud past. You know, I'm kind of a history nut. I, I like history. And, and the more I find out about Shakopee and its role in this, development of this whole area, you know, it, it's striking what that proud past is. So the next question is, how do we recognize our past?
Kathy? Do you like starting every time or?
Well, you know, I.
Got a pattern.
I, I don't think that we do recognize our past, and, and the reason I say that is because I can struggle to figure out what Shakopee's past is. Being a transplant, I struggle to understand what Shakopee was or is. So I, you know, I've learned things from sitting on council, I've learned things from being in groups, but I will say we really do have trouble recognizing our past, and I think that's something that we need to start embracing more. And showcasing. When we talked about Chief Shakopee and having a statue, I think that's a great idea, you know, when they, we talked about that for downtown, is part of that project. I think it's, you know, the history is figuring out what we're proud of. You know, why is Pullman Club called the Pullman Club? Why is, you know, why is the bridge crossing where it's at? There was, there's all little stories to everything that I think you learn.
The prohibition era.
Right, but you don't learn that from being a transplant, you learn that from engaging in the community, but where do you find out that information?
You know, we've got historic architecture in town here, I mean, a lot of people don't look at it, but those who are into it do look at it. We've got the historic bridge that they kept at a very big cost, but it's still there. I mean, it's, it's something, that's something I think we need to find out if we can do some picnics or something on it. I mean, do weddings on it, I don't know what, but it needs to be utilized, it's, it's just sitting there, it's, it's such a waste. The Historical Society, you know, they had someone give them thousands of pictures, and they're trying to use them, but they need money to do it. And I think, you know, I, I guess they probably are gonna have to fundraise for it. I gave her an idea of putting together shadow boxes full of pictures, put, put a dozen of them out, put them in like turtles and arneys and every one of them, and then once a month you rotate them. So that everybody gets to see everything, and then once a year, change them all out. You know, with thousands of pictures, you can easily do it. You know, and I'm.
We're, we're looking to take some of those and incorporate them into the new city hall, by the way.
Nice, nice. But, you know, we've seen them around town from, and they're, they're neat pictures to see, the old Main Street, you know, when it was some horses on the street and some of the old original cars, you know, Main Street was dirt. You know, we, most, a lot of those buildings are still standing, you know. They've changed numerous times, but.
Yeah, Terry, Terry Hennan's building and the history of that.
Old newspaper used to be upstairs.
Yeah, it was on, very cool.
Third floor was the, this, one of, we had two newspapers. There was a Republican and a Democrat newspaper. And you look at Shakopee, you know, it's not as old as Chaska or Carver, but look where we've gone. You know, we're so far ahead of them that it's, you know, leaps and bounds, and a lot of that has to do with the railroad.
There's a lot of aspects of history, and the Pullman Club started as a Pullman car, actually, just so you know. And I have struggled with this over the years, as being part of the Historical Society and trying to get, I used to do a walking tour downtown, and there's so many different areas and sites. Of course, many of them have changed over the years, some of them are still here. But how, how do we do that, and how do we look at that and say, this used to be here, or this is here still, and this is what it used to be with, and having those pictures and those signs, and it does cost money to do those things. But a lot of communities have their statues and their plaques and their cannons and different things that represent different things, and monuments and things to look at, and there's, we're working on a project now for some of those historic sites. But where do we get the money to, to move those trail signs to where people can use them and actually work on that? So that's, that's a project that's still in the works, but, but we have so much to sell, and that goes back to the conversation we had about tourism. How do we get them to stop at Valley Fair and come down and eat in the downtown restaurant and go have a beer in a downtown pub and, and walk around downtown? Well, some of those things lead you to the next step by, you know, showcasing some of that history and having.
Yeah, you know, I'm one of the few people that have been up on the third floor, and you can actually have the feel of that old newspaper, because the floors are still the same. Just for some reason, it just kind of, you, you get a feel of what they were doing.
The Masonic Lodge was on the third floor, and I think the press was on the second floor.
Well, then just.
There's a lot of that, and nobody knows that, and.
Just the trek to get up there. I mean, these steps are unbelievable.
So it is an interesting part of that, but we, we don't sell that, and I think that's part of it, because we do have that history. We have the prohibition, the little Chicago stuff that we don't, we don't sell, and we, and I, and I think we're, we're missing out on some of that play part of it, and, you know, using the businesses that we do have. And, and bringing that sense of place that, the history that we have has. So I think those are some aspects. We talked about the pictures and the windows and the plaques and things, but the riverfront itself, how do we, that's a major, that's why we are here. And how do we bring people back to that and understand that, that that's part of our history?
Matt?
How do we recognize our past? Well, there's a lot of folks in Shakopee that don't know about our past, don't really care about our past. There are some folks that are pretty adamant about it. I'm kind of a history buff of Shakopee myself, nowhere near as much as you, eh? How do we recognize our past? I mean, it's got a, we've got a pretty colorful past. There's parts of my past that I'd like to forget about, so there's probably some of our past of Shakopee that we probably don't want to advertise.
People are dead.
Fair enough.
Okay? Like the tunnels and prohibition between the bars downtown.
Gangster stuff, yeah.
Right? The, the gold, the gold line hiding places around the bars downtown in them tunnels. Don't go digging them up, you might get arrested. We do have a, a pretty extensive past. I mean, it starts as a, as a riverbank settled town. You know, building the town up with our, our own brick yards, the old brick yard downtown, I played in there as a kid. The Kiln is down, down by the trail, it's, it's got a plaque by it. These are things, places we, you know, we were pretty young to be running on top of them very high walls that were crumbling. It's amazing we didn't get hurt. But whatever. You know, I don't know the, the answer to how we, how we recognize our past. You know, it's not, it's not a, a financing priority of mine as a councilperson, but, but I think it is something that we as a, as a city and as a council can certainly direct and steer other folks to do this. I, I, I'm not a fan of duplication of services. You've got the National Historical Register on a national level, you've got SHIPO at the state level, you've got Scott County Historical Society right in the middle of Shakopee. We've got three levels of government already paying for these things, and now we're talking about a fourth layer of government paying for the same thing again.
No, I'm not saying about.
I'm not either, but it's how do we recognize it, right? We need to figure out how to take what we're looking for to capture them tourists and get them down to see our things, and how do we get this? We pay this group over here, Scott County Historical Society, with our tax dollars, which we're the largest payer in the county of Shakopee residents. How do we give them, help them with a plan to make that happen? And then how do we work with our chambers so that when tourists do come here, the information that they get has it on there so that they have something to go to to actually do it? Okay? That's honoring your past, it's, it's, you know, it's making it known and giving people the opportunity to be able to go that route if they want to, without breaking the bank on, on the folks to say, I'm moving forward, you know?
Yeah, a lot of times with history, you'll have people that are just so enamored with it, that they'll, you know, you'll, you'll have more volunteers for history things than you have anything else, just because people believe in it so strongly. Okay, Mayor?
Well, I think history is real important, and I think we do have it in transplant, and I don't, here, I don't know it all, but I certainly have been around long enough to know these bits and pieces. And I think it's important to celebrate, I think we talk about a, any community, and we could, I could list, you know, Red Wing, what are they known for? Pottery, Bootery, what, Duluth, Leaf, Leaf Erickson Park, Chaska Mill, actually, but Shakopee had a part in the mill as well. The communities that you look at, even up north in Brainerd, you know, Paul Bundy and the Blue Ox, I mean, those, the towns are associated, actually, when you think about them, are known for their history. And there's some draw there, there's a, there's some history that you can learn, we don't do that. Whether it's a prohibition thing or the railroad, I know a lot, a lot of communities in Duluth, we have a railroad museum. A lot of communities celebrate the railroad if it's going by, they have an extra couple cars there, and that's, that's a draw for kids, families, whether they live there, whether they're tourists, they come and go and touch and play on that stuff. I think we need to do that.
Was it Hennan's building, location where the dynamite shed was for the brickyard?
Well, the exploded, the Wampox, one that's exploded?
I think it was on where Hennan's is.
All right. I'm sorry.
Okay, this one, I think, is probably a little easier. How do we plan for a promising future? I mean, frankly, we do that on a daily basis. You guys, all five of you are intricately involved in that process, at least as long as you're in the council. And that, you know, from my perspective, out of all these questions, this really is the one for the day-to-day city hall grind, if you will, of what we do, but my perspective, not yours.
I only came up with a one-word answer, and it's really about balance. Because I think the things that we listed when we were talking about, you know, our low taxes and our stability, and yet we want to have our, you know, transportation, our downtown improvements. I think it all comes with balance. It's having all of those things, and at least since I've sat on council, I, I feel like that's always been our goal, is to, is to make sure that we balance things for everyone. And not, and because, you know, like Matt said, it, it's gonna be something different for everyone, and it's finding the balance to make, you know, a few of each happy in whatever we choose.
Mike?
I think the promising future, the best thing we can do to have a promising future is get a hold of our tax bill, you know, keep them down as much as we can. I mean, that's gonna give people more money in their pocket. You know, more money in their pocket, they can come down in town and spend, you know, they can do what, you know, fun things, go to the recreation that we have, and, you know, Valley Fair, racetrack, Renaissance, you know. But if taxes are high and they can't afford it, they can't do it. So that, to me, is the biggest thing.
Well, as far as planning, I don't disagree with what you, what's been said. I think it's our, our duty to make sure we're getting the highest and best uses out of some of the development stuff that does come up. We need to make sure we've planned well for, and planning is, is the biggest key, but planning our infrastructure and planning our development, and that goes along with the annexation portion and talking about the growth on our west side and where we go from there, and how does that add to the next piece? You know, how do we put the infrastructure there that's gonna help us along down the road? And, of course, you know, doing it with, with maintaining those taxes and those funds that we have that keep us stable. So that, that's a, that's how we look to the future.
Matt?
Kathy's word was balance. The same approach, except I'm gonna use the word of prioritizing, because means the same, different word. When we look, how do we, how do we plan for a promising future? If, if we're not honest about what, you know, what our road needs are into the future, what our sewer needs are into the future, what these needs are, and we don't plan accordingly, you're gonna have massive spikes. And the massive spikes in your taxation are, are, are negative on your population and your local economy. So when I think about planning for a promising future, I'm talking about long-term stability, okay? And you get that by prioritizing, and, and you gotta make the hard choices and pick, do I want to, you know, have that transportation piece one sixty-nine? Without that, where would we be? Okay? These types of things are, are the important things that at some point you really have to prioritize. Do we want to do this without that? They had, they have an impact on each other, and, and long-term, they can have very negative consequences. So the stability side is, is your, your stable, low taxation rates to where you can keep your local, local economy alive and be attractive to people wanting to be here, and they can plan accordingly, whether it's a business, putting out a ten-year market plan, business plan. But in that, you've got a plan for what your, what your responsibilities are. You know, you've got roads maintained, you've got sewers maintained.
And that's, and that's a key point, especially when we look into the future, because a lot of things, a very simple concept, a lot of people don't understand, is I spend a dollar today on a capital project, I'm gonna maintain that capital project over a course of years. And then, at some point, I've got to replace that capital project, which is gonna be a dollar times three. Now, if we at stewards are only looking at this box, we're failing our future. Mayor?
When I think about this, I, you know, how do we plan for it? I think we go, still, I go back to that will because of business diversity has, has served us well. Also, the expansion of our tax capacity has helped aid keep our tax rate low. So if that were the goal, we want to keep a low tax rate, we want to, one of our goals is to expand our tax capacity, then it's, how do we plan for that? I think the single, one of the most single important things that we're looking at now is our orderly annexation agreement that we're trying to refresh, because that could possibly open up future lands, both for housing and commercial industrial. Key for that, which we talk about, living here and playing here, to make it available. That's a, I just go back twenty-five years, and one of the biggest assets in our community, while we had housing growth, one of the biggest assets was Valley Green Business Park, that was half, only a quarter filled up, had all that land available to be available for business growth. So when you think about living here and having more housing choices, which frees up other housing choices, when, for working here, you can have different businesses that keep that wheel diverse and availability of land. And then the play options, we hope that the entertainment aspect just continues to grow, and then, you know, ma- maintaining our park system.
Mayor, John Elvinson sold Shakopee for probably the better part of twenty-five years, free of charge, in the Valley Industrial Park. Now, if it wasn't for one sixty-nine, where would we have been as far as growth? Okay? So when we talk about the annexation, future annexation areas and future growth opportunities, transportation's critical in that, and we've had that conversation. But it's not just, you know, all forty-one crossing, it's, it's just river capacity wherever it goes. It might be more lanes on one sixty-nine, it's the completion of one-on-one, it's four lanes up to four ninety-four and up through Chanhasse to five. There's a lot of different ways that that could go, but without them, you know, we've got the improvements on sixty-nine, we've got one sixty-nine, sixty-nine overpass. So we've got a lot of them improvements, transportation-wise, made already, but there's still more to go. And, you know, depending on what time, kind of capacity that you're talking about for growth, that has an impact on what kind of river crossing capacity that you're gonna need. And the two have to be in sync, or they hurt each other substantially.
Well, we've seen that, we've seen that exact proposal, we've had the transportation, we've brought in the jobs. Now we're talking about transit and the, the housing part, so it's all a big circle and it all has to be part, but the transportation part is gonna be key, along with that other infrastructure that we're gonna have to develop.
Let's have, uh...
Mr. Reynolds, Shockabeef is in a special place. You know, we have been insulated from large aspects of economic problems due to our growth. I've, I've talked to every one of you about growth. When I was interviewed, one of the things that I, you know, what concerns you about, uh, Shockabeef? And it was specifically about growth and where we were on the growth curve. We are addicted to growth currently, which is okay, because we're going to get off, off growth, uh, and relying upon that for our future. Because what happens is, it's great when you're here on the growth curve. And, and you've got that tax capacity, which if everything else is even, will, will have your taxes go down. Increase the tax, tax passing absent your, 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 your property value going up as part of the reevaluation process. But this is, this is great, man, growth is great. But let's just put a scenario out there, let's say that, uh, we don't an- annex any more land on the west side, well, guess what? We're there, we're on that growth curve. And there, we no longer have this increased tax, tax capacity, which is frankly keeping our taxes in a very good position. We are here and we're not currently prepared to be here financially. We will be.
Right.
But we're currently not. So, my hope has always been that we, we're here. Uh, and then, and then, you know, by the time that comes around, uh, we'll, we'll be prepared for that.
You create efficiencies within the government itself, uh, hopefully stable, drive down the...
Instability, instability.
Drive down the cost, and I can't say drive, 'cause some things are, just have a cost associated, but try to make everything that we do and going forward, and I think we have done that in the past, be as efficient as we can from that. Because once that stops, you can get incremental growth out of tax capacity, but if you wanna have low taxes or a low tax rate, you have to be very, very efficient.
And don't forget, everything we build
Right.
is great when things are growing, but what happens when the growth curve ends there? And what are we gonna do here?
Well, once you hit the top of that growth curve chart, then it's, then it's, and like I've been saying for years, when you prioritize services, you know that these are, might be your, you absolutely gotta do no matter what, all the time, services, right? These are the really nice services that we're currently doing that, you know, we don't really have to do it, we just do it because, you know, we can and it's nice to have. But when you hit that point of no return to where you don't have that growth, that's when them decisions need to be made. And it's nice to have them, to see, some of these things figured out ahead of time so that you don't go in making bad decisions in spur of the moment.
Which is exactly why we're having this discussion. Okay. You know, Councilman Lehman, you hit this on the head, you know, and I told you, small-town thing is one of the things I like. But I, you know, in twenty-five minutes, I could be downtown having a great steak, you know? And I'm a food guy, so I'm all about that. So how do we balance that small-town, small-town Shockabeef, the small-town feel, you know, the place where we, we think we can leave our, Police Chief is gonna kill me for this, keep our, our front doors unlocked and...
Cars running.
Yeah. Uh, with, with the recognition that we are, are literally on the doorstep of a major metropolitan area, area. Kathy?
Um, I believe it's about connections. I believe it's connections, young and old, um, South Bridge, Dean's Lake, Downtown Hospital. I think it's connections with new residents versus lifetime residents. I, I think that's how you keep that small town, is, is making the connections and ac- and accepting that and have, and then my, my next thing would be, um, the, a balance of housing, the well-balanced housing, senior housing, um, workforce housing, townhouses, homes. Everything, all of that is gonna support that small town.
Okay. Mike?
Preserve what we have, we're, we've got a good balance, um, we are a small town, uh, you know, I don't know that we have to change much. And I guess be careful of change, you know, you may change the wrong way.
You know, I think, uh, we've talked a little bit about, uh, small-town, you know, with that sense of place, with our downtown and our history, trying to balance that and, um, having the communications and being able to talk to our neighbors and, uh, uh, those play aspects that we, we get together and, uh, our kids are playing at school and so we have those neighborhood things and, and, uh, that's part of having that, that safe and, you know, environment here and, um, that people can feel comfortable getting out and talking to their neighbors and, and somehow we encourage that and we do a little bit with the night to unite things and, but I think that's, that's a big part of it and, uh, I, you know, the history part of it and, uh, you know, entertainment part of it, that, that creates that small-town atmosphere. And, uh, even though we are right on the verge of being able to hop downtown if we want to, so...
Matt?
Well, I think the way we've been able to maintain our small-town identity over the years is as follows. If I take a look at Minneapolis and compare it to Shockabeef, Kathy's partially right, where we make the connections with trails and these types of things. But we've been able to build communities within a community, okay? We've, we've got South Bridge standalone, it's got its commercial, uh, service needs, it's got its own type of housing stock. We've got Old Shockabeef, different kind of housing stock, it's got its service areas. You go out by Marshall Road, uh, just on the other side, West Chester and some of these, we, we built communities within a community, okay? And we looked at them just as that when we developed them, at least we tried to. Some of them, granted, didn't work out road-wise the way we wanted to, uh, but I think that the intent was really, really, really well-played. But what really sets us out from all of these bigger metropolitan settings that we talk about is the densities. We don't have the stack and pack ultra-density skyscrapers everywhere where you can't move without seeing them all. Um, and that's what makes Shockabeef different than, than a major metropolitan. You, when you drive up into Minneapolis and you, you take Fifth Avenue or Eleventh Avenue, Grant Avenue into downtown, you're driving in, who wants to go there? Ask anybody, they're like, I don't even wanna go there, but, but they have to. They make that turn and three lanes going downtown, which way do you go, one-way? You can only make a left, but you can't make a U-turn, you can't do this, you can't do that, nobody knows. You gotta go three blocks up to even go around a block to get back to where you're trying to go and, and it's a nightmare. We didn't create that, we created, most of our road systems in Old Shockabeef are a great pattern. A lot of our other roads, they're all both directions, with very few one-ways, besides we're along a river track. So we looked at it from a standpoint of, how does our community members get around? And it goes back to the transportation piece. Um, how do we build these pockets that, uh, um, are unique in character, but yet part of Shockabeef? And we did that, actually, we did that pretty well, I think. Uh, multiple councils, multiple planning commissions and multiple staffs. So, I think it's critical that if you wanna keep that, you gotta look, recognize what the differences are first and say, we either wanna be this or we wanna be that. And if you wanna be that, then copy them. And if you don't wanna be them, don't do what they're doing. So that's how I'd like, that's how I see it.
Mayor?
Well, I thi- I think we've come a long way since the, we had horses in our community. And, uh, I think of it as, uh, you know, I don't really, I wanna be close to the metropolitan area, but I want, I really wanna retain that small-town, river-town feel. And I think we have done that in our community over the years. Um, we do have pocket, different ar- or, I shouldn't say different areas, but I've, when I, where I grew up in Duluth, we had neighborhoods, right? So that's what they called, it's, it's South Bridge, over by the hospital, uh, Old Shockabeef, I mean, they're, you know, what, uh, over there was called Riverside, right? I mean, those are, those are considered neighborhoods and we've kinda, in our community, moved away from that. We, we still call it by geographical name, but, um, that's what it was. I, I think we, we've done a good job, I think we still should continue to work at enhancing and leveraging our small-town feel, uh, for the better, betterment of our residents and hopefully future residents. And it, it's interesting, 'cause here on the council, we have some born and raised folks and, and they, they have that history piece and that and then, I guess outsiders, 'cause I had a council member once told me that I'll, I'll always be an outsider, right? No matter how long I live here, is that true, still true?
That's what I...
There's more of us now, though.
But, uh, you know, one of the reasons I came to this community when we first started this discussion, I think there, those reasons are still valid today and to get there and how to get there in the next twenty years, or continue that.
All right, well, we're an hour into this, uh, again, the purpose of this was to get you thinking a little bit about the future, uh, you know, and, and frankly, hearing what each other had to say about it. Uh, to kind of flush out where we go, uh, from a staff perspective. As you know, what we have on the table right now, uh, on the paper are mostly twenty-seventeen objectives. But this year, we have included some longer-term, three-to-five-year out. Next year, I'm gonna bump, if I'm still here, of course, I wanna bump that out even further. Uh, so we can try to inculcate a lot of what you're... Uh, in regards to those long-term pieces to make sure that we're achieving what it is that you as a group want. Uh, the majority of the things that are on this list, um, I told you that initially, we really wanted to focus on, you know, it would be great to focus on those five-oh things. But recognizing that frankly, this isn't a five-oh council. And there are times where we're not gonna have that opportunity. But I think for the most part, uh, the things that we have on, on the list, uh, uh, for the twenty-seventeen work plan are generally, I would think, in looking at them, five-oh issues. As long as we can figure out how to inculcate some of your direction to achieve the ultimate objective, so... Uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, um, we have the different categories. Uh, my thought process is that, you know, some of these will be relatively easy, we understand what low taxes are, for example. But recognizing that some of these all, also interplay with each other. You know, if we can kind of walk through these and if there's a specific direction, uh, and I know that Councilman Lehman has some in regards to committees, which I think we need to develop more. But other than that, I kind of throw it over to you and we can go from there.
You know, I think as, you know, as we always are trying to prepare for the future, I think, uh, you know, the, orderly annexation agreement, the future hopeful river crossing, you know, be, be in a position for that.
Or any river.
Any river, I mean, uh, the, the, any expanded or new river capacity crossing. You know, be in a position to, to enjoy the, the, the fruits of that, I guess. You know, I think that we're gonna see, which we just briefly talked about, that we're gonna have a workshop in mid-April, uh, talking about the, the sewer, 'cause the dynamics of the, that funding, uh, long-term, may change. And we, you know, I think that we have tried to give staff direction that, to look also at, at parks, because parks eats a lot of our budget up and how we look at that long-term, both in maintenance and replacement. You know, well, I think we should be very cognizant of that and find a way to, to maybe bring that down or be more efficient at it. Or really, go back to the circles on the map, where do you need parks? That I think we might've gotten away from in the last ten years. But, uh, uh, we can go through these lists again, but I, I, you know, we've talked about ranking them or prioritizing, I think they're each in their own little bucket. And I'm looking at the first one, I, I like all this stuff. And I pick one over another, um, some of it is status quo and expected, you know? Without a question, it's inherent in our conservative nature of our community. But, uh, uh, does anybody else have a idea of how they wanna talk about each of these buckets as we move forward?
I don't have my list with me. I made a commitment ten years ago that I no longer print out city paperwork on my printer at home because it's, I, way too much ink in my life.
I think I printed two.
The one I wanted to hit on, if it's on here, well, actually, I could hit on a couple of them. I don't see the committees on here.
Well, Community Center Operations Funding.
Use of Committees and Miscellaneous Projects.
Uh, when I, when I... Go to the first section, though, or how you want?
It's in the finance section.
It's on the second page, right here.
Yeah, it's under, use, use of committees under miscellaneous projects.
What, what originally happened there was, we went over what the, what the role is, same like we did with council, staff did, you know, here's what the role of council is, blah, 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 blah. Just the oversight, and what I was getting at when I brought that up was, we as a council need to be able to say, and these are strictly examples, so if you're a board member on any of our boards or commissions watching, don't take it personal. Maybe one of our charges from council to the park board is to do this, you know, that study on where should future parks be, using this circle technique, like what the fire department did for station locations, these types of things. And then when we look at our overall cost, do we, do we direct to them to look at what other parking rec, throughout the state averages are and how do we get there and still supply outstanding services to our community? You know, and that, and that goes to all of our boards and commissions, maybe it's the bicycle committee or something where we're telling them, you know, we want Shockabeef to be bicycle-friendly, that has a cost, how do we pay for it? How do you raise money for these things? Do we have licenses on bikes or whatever? Because realistically, the people using these things should pay for them, right? Do we, how do we as a body take this, what is, we want the EDAC, okay? Do we wanna, what is our priority? Do we want to continue tax incentives to lower-wage jobs? Do we think we have enough of them? Do we wanna, would we subsidize high-paying jobs? And if so, what type of jobs would, would rate the highest? I mean, these are things that we should be having a discussion on, figuring it out and giving that direction to these boards and commissions to really dive down into the weeds.
Right, well, the EDAC, there's not, you know, right now, there's not a lot happening. We already reworked our plan to increase the pay, the aspect of it, I, you know, I think it's, it's pretty good right now. Do we develop a, a policy for something higher or, I think actually if a company came at nineteen-plus, then you look at your incentives and, you know, do we need a, do we need a two-step policy or you come in and then we, we would see depending on those jobs?
Well, the last time I brought it up, I said, and I was talking to the council, I said, well, maybe we come up with something like XYZ. And I think it was something along the lines of, um, if it's jobs that pay in this range, it's like a fifty percent abatement availability in our policy, if, if the jobs pay up here, maybe it's a seventy-five percent. If the jobs pay way up here, maybe it's, you know, ninety-five percent or something.
We, we just reworked that, I mean...
Well, we, we reworked it for the dollar amount, but we...
I don't wanna just scale it up. Busy work for these committees, you know, I, I don't think we need to do that, I mean, if we have a priority, then maybe...
Because we also said we didn't wanna keep something from coming here, like a grocery store, because they maybe didn't hit those marks. So we had conversations about some of the industry that we wanted to come, that maybe would have hit some of where our wage pieces were. And so we didn't wanna be exclusive and say, no, we're not gonna, we're gonna say no to you because you're X.
Right.
I, I think that's, that's why we didn't really dive in and go really find out what lying.
I think actually for economic development, I think the next couple things that, that may come in front of the, uh, city over the next year or so is, uh, redevelopment. And the, what would you do to get redevelopment? This site, you know, this is not on the tax roll, it's a building, it's dated, can it be used as-is? Possibly, it would take some money, you know, to, to do something with it. It would take some money, you know, to, to do something with this. Or does it get razed, and then you have an empty lot, and then you sell it? You know, really, I've seen cities do this. It's not saying that we would do it. But do you sell it for a dollar to get something in exchange of high value, of value that starts paying taxes? And then, as a council...
But that's not gonna be an advisory commission decision, that's gonna be something that comes back to us.
Right, and I agree, but it, those are, those are, like, I think, I think the next year, I think the, the redevelopment question will come, and it's rather, what would we, well, it's kind of like, what would you give to get? Although it's a, an asset here, what would we, what would you do to get something here of value back on the tax rolls?
When I brought up this topic, the, the reason I brought it up is because, do we, do we want our boards and commissions working on things that council wants them working on, or do we want to let them work on their own?
Well, we want them to work on things we're working on, but there's not a lot we're working on. And some of these questions, like I just brought up, are obviously council policy...
Right, right. But that's a specific, and I'm, I'm talking of, you know, we've got a lot of lower-wage jobs.
Yeah.
I have no reason to believe that I'm gonna support taxpayer incentives for more lower-wage jobs.
Right.
We've got enough already.
Okay.
That's my, that's my, that's, that's just my opinion, okay? Now, if I'm looking long-term in our community and the diversification that we're gonna need in, in workforce, where we're lagging is these upper-end jobs.
Right.
So I'm trying to focus any kind of future incentives in something that has what we're looking for, at least what I'm looking for, what I thought we were looking for as a council. So that's kind of what I'm getting at.
And from a broad perspective, then, if I can make a suggestion, if, if staff develops various, you know, one or two sentences of policy or issues, and brings them before the council, and then, you know, it can start that debate as to what it is the council wants their committees to actually do. And it may not be anything on the list, frankly.
Right.
It may be, but, you know, but from that may be a generation of something that you want them to do. But we can at least begin that process to figure out what it is this council wants the committees to be working on. And, and from a staff perspective, we can certainly do that. It'll, it'll start the discussion, and then, and then hopefully, hopefully will involve members of the committees to be willing to come in and talk about the issues as well.
It just seems more productive if we've got them working on something that we ourselves, as a body, want, want done, you know?
All right, let's just go around here, Jay. I'm sorry, Mike.
Oh, you're talking about the whole list?
Let's just stick with the finance part of it.
Yeah, you know, I, I have nothing that I think I would disagree with on the finance part. And I like the prioritizing of services part of it. And some of these, you know, the park asset review fund, the community center operations funding, these are gonna be things that are gonna take some time. But I'm interested in seeing the results from these things. And that, you know, the, the community center operations and the, the park and rec expenses, I think that kind of goes together, I guess, in my mind, unless somebody was trying to get at something else there.
Well, I, I just brought up, I, I think that some park asset, park, park dedication fees, whatever those fees is, and like Mr. Reynolds pointed out, you build something, you gotta maintain it. And we have a process for maintaining or refreshing those things. But, and then the replacement, I just look at park and rec, and I, I recognize that it's a big part of our overall budget. And it, it's bigger than public works by itself, it's, you know, not public...
It's bigger than most communities in the state.
And we have a lot of, we have a lot of expenses.
So I want to make sure efficiencies are coming here. And if we're allocating the right type of money, I'm also, I wrote on my list, I didn't even bring up, that I think that I'd like to retain the double and, or even capture a triple-A bond rating. And the, I'm, I'm worried about the expenses of our new community center, and want to make sure that's within reason. We already tried to work on the debt portion of it, it's, you know, two million dollars, basically, for twenty years. It, it will get smaller in the years, but that's a lot on our, on our tax levy every year. And so those, and the expenses with the debt load, and I'm a money guy, and that's what I look at.
And I agree, and I'm not, I'm not just picking out park and rec, but we can use that same model, and I talked to staff about this in a, in a personal situation that happened in town here. Let's say somebody pulls a permit to do X, Y, Z on their property, and they've got five bobcats in the alley tearing it up in their project. They get all done with their project, you know, they got a permit, the alley's all torn up, city staff goes up there, fixes the alley. This is part of that permit. The general population did destroy this alley, whoever destroyed it should be paying to fix it or fix it themselves.
Yeah.
Basically, it's a, it's overall going back to putting those that are using the service paying for it.
Right.
You can't do that totally, but it's the same type of scenario.
Right, okay. Let's move around here, Jay, did you have a...
Yeah, no, as far as the, the park stuff, you know, I know we do have some, it does come up, and we do have new development. The concerns about the park dedication fees, and everybody wants to get that lowered or waived and things. So I think that might be part of some of that discussion, as we look at these things coming back. As far as the finance part, I have no other concerns.
Mike?
Going back to, going back to the boards, I think it's imperant on us to give them some leeway. If they have a good idea, have them throw it to us. See if we're, you know, we're gonna go along with it. I mean, we don't just hogtie them and say, you can't talk about anything else, you know? There's new things out there. You know, we found out as far as the parks, we just replaced one, and it costs way more to be state-of-the-art now than it did twenty years ago.
Right.
You know, so we gotta be careful on that. As far as community center, you know, you're talking two million dollars, that's just on the bonding, that's not on operational.
Oh, absolutely.
No, I'm, I'm just pointing things out to people that are listening, that, you know, we don't even got a hand, we don't have a handle on that yet. You know, we gotta get a year or so into it to see where we're gonna be. As far as park asset fee and fund review, community center operations funding, park asset planning process, and park and rec expenses, I think they need to be in a, their own area. I mean, they, they're, that's a, a big part of our city, and that needs to be focused in on as far as long-term planning and, you know, where it's gonna take us, because, you know, that could turn around and be a big, big problem for us.
Right, and I think to be very efficient and effective in, in that area would bode us well, looking twenty years out, with the, with the amount of infrastructure that we have now. Absolutely, okay.
On the same token, Mayor, you gotta think about what you're building today.
About what?
What you're building today.
Yeah, right.
I would argue that spending a hundred grand on a consultant to look at building Quarry Lake, when you don't have the money to build it, you certainly don't have the money in the park asset to maintain it.
Right.
You know, this should have been really looked at long-term, because now, when that building needs to be replaced, how are we gonna pay for it?
What, the building?
The, the building, once it's built at Quarry Lake.
Oh, it's not built yet.
Right, and we're already working on second phase, now third phase, when that building gets built...
Granted, it, it's not an expected granted situation, but...
Well, you, you got four million dollars worth of infrastructure in the ground, I have a hard time believing you're not gonna build something there. Otherwise, you wasted four million dollars, right?
I, I don't know.
Well, that's the...
All right, Kathy?
I would agree with all the finance pieces here. I think it's all been said.
All right, good. Next, land planning, again, we're, we're doing a lot of this stuff, where we've done the high-density circles, we did that last February, fifty by thirty. We're talking to the township about the orderly annexation phasing. Comp plan, Mr. Reynolds, can you bring us just a brief minute on the, we're getting up to speed there?
Yeah, we've, we've, as you know, we've hired our, our long-term planner, whose ultimate responsibility will be the comp plan. We've partnered with the county in some respects on it already. We have the RFP, that's out now? Okay, and you'll have an update the next council meeting.
So, we can talk about this, or go around real quick, but we haven't talked a lot about the riverfront improvements, but I know that this board just passed a resolution of support for a future river crossing somewhere. Active annexation process, we're, we're talking with them. With the west end planning, I think there, that's moving slowly, but there, obviously, you know, we've, we've already seen some actual benefits of that with the High V area, that's, it was not, it was a part of the west end, and Horton coming forward, so that's all part of it. Quick comments on any of that for the land planning, Kathy?
I would have to say that I agree with everything on here. I think our comprehensive plan is obviously gonna take precedence. I hope everyone got a chance to look at the slides that I, that I had sent through, Mr. Reynolds, about thirty, fifty by thirty. It's interesting to look at housing and how that's going to affect us, and transportation, and the cost of, how, what it costs people to live, and working families. So I think that's the thing that I want to see come through in our comprehensive plan, so...
And, and if I may, Mr. Mayor and, and council members, this comp plan is not going to be like the comp plans you've seen in the past. This will be a readable, workable, understandable document. A lot of times, you know, if you look at former comp plans from this city or any other, you know, I'm, I'm a reasonably well-educated guy, and half the time, I don't understand what they're trying to say. So we've taken great pains to look at some real, down-to-earth, usable comp plans, and that's what we'll be looking to bring forward for this organization. And it won't be sitting on a shelf somewhere, it'll be open on desks and be used as a working document. I mean, we have to do a comp plan, but we need to do a working comp plan.
Will it be smaller than the last one, that measured in at seven and a half inches?
Yes, sir.
All right. I can use my Indian head binder from the old one, that was only two inches big then.
I have the old one on my thing, about that big. The only one I really have heartburn over is the high-density housing.
Okay.
I think our, our four text amendment is fatally flawed.
Well, we did put some circles on them, Matt, we did build consensus last year. Obviously, we haven't seen but a couple of those, and one's really kind of, you know, do you count the one out on, over by South Bridge, is that?
Stagecoach.
Yep, do you count that as that?
What did that come in at for a density? And I haven't seen it either, I haven't been out there.
You know, I think we've talked a little bit about a lot of these things, and I, I like the idea about the comp plan, because that's immediate, and I want to be able to use that document. But getting back to the high-density housing and the fifty by thirty...
We need it.
We, we, if we're gonna create these transporta, transportation, you know, the, the river crossing or any other new transportation additions, and we want the fifty by thirty, the, the higher-density housing is gonna have to come with it, or it, it's kind of part and parcel, and, and you, you need to have, if, if you want to get fifty percent of your workforce working here, you're gonna need a little more housing to do that. And because of some of the wage jobs we did bring in, of course, we've talked about trail connections, and I think that's, that's a part of it. But what I'd like to highlight here is, you know, is the, the annexation part, the west end planning and the growth, and I know we don't want to rely on that.
No.
But we have to think about that and how we do grow our community. And along with the riverfront improvements, I think, I think that goes back to, you know, our sense of place and, and where we are, where we've come from, and, and that adds an amenity that will stay with us and not flood and do more damage, that's gonna cost us more money. So I think those are parts that got left out in the past, and I think we need to reevaluate them.
Good. Mike?
I think in the past, that those comp plans are so big, because it was all gray area, you know, they, they mumbo jumbo to make it so anything can go, you know? You just pick something in the book. As far as the high-density housing, I'm not a real fan of R4, I'm a fan of R3 with planned unit development. I mean, bring it forward, we'll look at it, excuse me, and go from there. As far as annexation, I say, you know, why are we spending so much time on, with these talks? We've got an agreement. Use the agreement, stay with it, and just get it over with. I mean, I mean, there's a few strategies, I've been talking to Councilman Layman about it, there's a, you know, a little strategic move here and there, but we can still do those with, within that two-year plan, so...
We're just trying to enhance it long-term, for both parties.
Yeah, we just think we're kind of being held to a higher standard by the township, and from what I'm hearing, I haven't been in on any of the talks, but, you know, I think we need to just say, this is it, and get it over with. So, that's my two cents.
I guess I apologize, on the next page here, as we, there were a couple of things that were attached to the land pan, planning area. You know, city property development, I believe we built consensus here a month ago, and trying to get a, some city property, try to leverage that and get that developed. City hall redevelopment, I know we've had developers come and look at that. It's, it's what I spoke about, though, if the developer's gonna come forward and try to present a plan, and, you know, what are we willing to do to get this back on the tax roll in a, in a good, high use, and what that use is, so, not that we have a plan in front of us. Orderly annexation agreement, you know, I think we all agree that that's a part, but if that were to not happen, and we had to do it some other way, you know, the old mall redevelopment, you know, is already within the city, that mall struggles, there's a lot of land, we own land there, and downtown redo, or, you know, infrastructure improvement was on that list.
Question, on redevelopment is listed on here in multiple...
Yeah.
Locations. To me, redevelopment is the private sector taking an existing property and doing something different with it, whether it's fixing it up or tearing it down.
If someone were to buy this building, I'd call it redevelopment.
I'm just, I, I just don't support government being in the real estate business and giving tax dollars out to redevelop a property, that's the private sector of my world.
We're getting nothing now.
It, it's more than that, it's actually making sure we have the policies in place to allow reasonable redevelopment. We're very good at development, because we've been doing it for years, but we're not very good at redevelopment. And it's that piece that we really want to focus on, and that's why you see it so much there, is because from a staff level, we, we certainly have the expertise at this point. But, you know, we have to look at our policies and procedures and make sure that we are not a hindrance to that redevelopment. So that's as much of an issue for, for, for staff as, as any type of financing or anything else. There's, you know, frankly, there's limited things that we can give for redevelopment. We can do SAC credits, there might be a few other things, a facade improvement program, obviously. But redevelopment is not development, and so we, what we really need to do is to focus on those policies to make sure, and, and procedures to make sure that we're not hindering redevelopment.
Wouldn't you put, you know, land that's sitting vacant as redevelopment? I mean, it's, it's obvious, we gotta get it back on the tax rolls.
Yep, something that had a previous use on it, that may change. I mean, yeah, I count empty lots in the city or...
Empty lots that we own, frankly, I mean, you know?
That we own, what I'm getting at.
We, we own, we own the, the three acres at east end of town, we own the gasoline, gasoline station on this end, along with some other land over there. Yeah, certainly, if we own it, we are the developer then at that point.
But we also need to open, be open to partnerships and those things, to try and create a bigger project, because in the end, it's tax-based for us, and it helps all these other things.
And Matt, I, I don't want to be in the real estate business either. I want to be, you know, I want to be in the tax roll business.
But, but the reality is, is that we are, because we own this place.
Right, I know that.
We own land.
Right, but there's an opportunity, and like I said, this generates no taxes, we're moving, like to get this, you know, developer come in and, or buyer, and put this back on the tax rolls. What does that look like? I don't know.
I'm talking about government buying a property or taking it by force.
We're not doing that, we're not doing that.
And tearing it down and building, selling it to, selling empty lot to a developer.
We, we have some widgets we could sell. We're not, we don't need any right now, we have plenty that we gotta find a way to get, to, to produce, so. All right, miscellaneous projects, we've certainly talked about the...
I, I understand it. On the property that the city does own, just to get it on record, I would be willing to give it away for a dollar, because it's doing, it's no good right now. Get it on the tax rolls, and then we're gonna benefit from it. Right now, we're maintaining it, we gotta mow it, we got it, we got insurance on it. You know, that's stupid. Well, you know, it's stupid, you, you gotta move it.
I'm sure if I can give it away for a buck, but...
Well, let's see, you know, let's see, let's see a proposal, and, you know, most of it is like, not in Chocopee, but we do have some, that, and I don't think we own any, that... that.
I got a buck.
A lot of it is either a building they want to tear down that's expensive or there's some soil remediation. Those are some real...
I'll give you a five for this building right now.
Expensive propositions that I, I'm not sure, don't think we own some of those.
Give you twenty bucks for this building right now.
Only with a plan.
The key, I think, I think everybody understands that this council would be willing to, to market properties depending on what it was that was coming to the table.
And we still have the ultimate...
Not a garage.
Pistol range.
Or pistol range.
The ultimate control here, Mike.
Right zoning.
I say we take his five bucks and make the deal because he's going to have to pay taxes on the price.
Well, he hates taxes. I know that.
No, that's not true.
All right.
I, I just like my taxes going for worthy services that the general public gets a benefit from.
The whole city of Shakopee would get a benefit from your taxes.
All right, let's try to move forward. Miscellaneous projects, couple items, signage, which we've been talking about for a couple of years. Use of committees, which we need to do better job of. Code enforcement. Mr. Reynolds, you want to run a few of these? These are, these are actually real important ones and I feel if we, you know, there's one that's at the end of the list, just be at the end of the list, I think should be bubbling to the top here over the summer, maybe into the fall.
Yeah, actually, the fire chief and I met with the tribe this morning on, on the Southbridge fire issue. You know, from a staff level, it seems to make sense, but ultimately, both political bodies have got to want to move forward. And what we're, what we're doing right now is figuring out how to bring that forward and, and what the timeline would be. We did initially say that the tribe would take first blush at it and that I would be available to answer questions of the tribe. You know, essentially, we would have, we're very lucky because we, we train and we generally have the same equipment, both the tribe and, and our fires department. So that piece of it is actually not, not a, a big issue. But it has to make sense for both organizations and so it, it's going to take some study and it's going to take some time. But, you know, as it stands now, we'll go to the tribe and then we'll come here with the final report that basically looks at the issue in general. And then ultimately, if both sides agree, then obviously we'd have to start dialing down and talk about financing, talk about how it's run, talk about the procedures that would be controlling the organization. But if it doesn't, then, then, then we obviously have to look at what we're going to do to service Southbridge a little more effectively when it comes to fire service. So that's, that's where we are on the fire issue for Southbridge.
Okay. Just real quick, do you want to go around, do you have, on the miscellaneous, Kathy?
I'm good.
All right. Matt?
I'd like to see, I think the signage wayfinding can probably be done in-house since we have our own signage and stuff.
I think there's a lot of opportunity for that.
Yeah. Code enforcement, we just passed a change to that policy, God, it wasn't but a couple of months ago. Like, we should wait and see how that works out. Transparency, communications, I think that's always ongoing. The school resource officer, that was, we just redid that contract and school's paying for that fourth. The one thing I guess, if I'm going to be consistent, when I talk, when we look at community engagement, neighborhood group activities, so on and so forth, I don't want it to be a burden, but how do we, how do we have them, and not necessarily pointing out any of them, but how do we make them stand alone, self-sufficient to the community? Like, you know, National Night Out, Night to Unite, whatever they call it nowadays. You know, there's a lot of city cost that goes into that. How do we capture some of that cost for those that are benefiting?
Yeah, and, and, you know, that, that's a philosophical argument, frankly. There are some things that, if you remember, I talked to a little bit about how we can learn from business, but we're not a business because we create something called public value. That's our widget when it comes to night to unite. That is nothing more than public value.
Right.
It's, it's, you know, so we're creating something that you really can't put a dollar sign on when it comes to night to unite. But in any program, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't look for opportunities to do everything we can to make them more efficient, to make them as self-standing as possible, recognizing that there are some that simply that's not going to be the case.
Well, I think what goes in there, and we've seen bits and pieces in our communities, some other communities are better at it, is telling our story. And the old, you know, picture of a dollar and here's how much you pay and here's where it goes. Pie wheel, efficiencies. I know that, you know, police and fire have a rating on that, at least the fire does. Police response, I mean, we had a report a while back on the, you know, the activity of the police department on the top. Public works, how fast they can, how often do they pile those streets, how many miles? Break that down a little bit into residential speak and then tell that story. Because I think actually Shakopee does real well if we could figure out how to tell a story about it.
And Mayor, that's where our budgets are headed. You know, we had to do some financial restructuring this time around, but, you know, two to three years down the road, our budgets will not be so much about how many pencils we're buying. It's going to be about what we're doing.
Or delivering or...
Yes, sir.
Yep. Kathy?
I, I think the reason that I had asked to put this on the miscellaneous projects with the community engagement, neighborhood group activity is because it really answers your last question, how do we achieve balance between a small town and metropolitan feel? And it's making those connections. And if people are connected to their community, even if it's in their neighborhood, they feel better and safer. And so there is that value that we're getting for maybe some of those small costs.
So maybe, maybe from, and I'm a strong supporter of neighborhood watch and National Night to Unite and stuff, been for many years, so don't get me wrong there, but maybe with the way I'm looking at this is we need to be looking at community engagement, neighborhood group activity, what am I thinking of, opportunities? As we need to be able to separate whether there's a overall community benefit, which many of them are, and whether there's some of them that aren't. You know, if an outside group comes into town and wants to use our reading spaces for free or something, that's not a community overall benefit, right? We've already decided that, but that's an example. So I think I'd like to look at it that way.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
See, I'm looking at this completely differently.
Yeah, because there's, there's, there's communities that already do this and I don't think we have to necessarily reinvent the wheel. But we can look at what they're doing and how they're doing it. And I think that's the most important point because why do we want to reinvent it and have to work through all those, those, what could be perceived as issues when it's already done?
You know, you've got a valid point to where if it's an overall community benefit, we should be embracing it and I agree with that and, and we have in the past, but I just want to make sure that we're not creating a burden.
No, 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 no. We're trying to, trying to build engagement.
You know, I'm seeing this differently and I'm, I'm seeing it as, as not the, you know, the neighborhood, the night to unite is nice, but I, I'm seeing it as the position in the, in the police department that, you know, Barb's position that she's going out and engaging with groups whether, and getting the communication started so that they feel comfortable, you know, coming down and talking to a police officer, reporting a crime or, you know, or just if there's an issue at the schools or, and having, whether it be they're a part of our ethnic community or, or just on a neighborhood basis so that, so that they know we're there, they know who to talk to, and they know a friendly face out there. And so I'm not seeing it as that one night. I'm seeing it as, as having that position.
Multiple interactions, you even look at public works, they're some of our biggest faces because they're out in the public every single day. The police, hopefully not the fire.
Well, fire prevention, we...
But, you know, all those activities combined, you know, and we saw it on the survey, it's always a tough thing, community engagement, how do you, why I, you know, I've been involved a long time. I think there's a lot of ways to be, but I'm looking and getting and capturing that information. Some people don't, folks don't know how to do that or it's, it's harder for them to, to be engaged. But, you know, I think we all want the same thing, be engaged if you want. That's part of it. Did you have more comments on the miscellaneous projects?
I do, yes. You know, I think we got a little bit on the signage and wayfinding. To me, it goes back to that tourism point and some of those historic signages and way signing. And so maybe, maybe not, you know, parking over here, but celebrating our community and creating that sense of place with some signage and different things like that. So that's, I think, where I was going with that comment.
Can you expand on that?
Brought it up. Well, we talked about the historic, how do we celebrate our history? And, you know, whether it be the statue of, you know, Reverend Pond and Chief Shakopee or whether it be a sign that, you know, this used to be the Masonic Lodge on the third floor or the Pullman Club, it used to be a Pullman car. Some of those things to try and sell, the tourism part and getting people downtown. And I think that, and also use of the trails like we talked about. I would like to see, you know, as far as use of committees, we kind of beat that up a little bit, but I don't want to be creating more committees if we're not going to use them.
Right.
We've consolidated committees in the past and whether we're being used or not, we have to decide if it's important to the community.
And I think committees have evolved in the last 20 years, so, you know, we've had some committees that served a purpose for a while and then found out that, oh, maybe we don't need that. And like the bicycle committee, how old's that one?
It was a few years old. We got rid of three committees before that.
Right, exactly. So, okay.
And we've, you know, as far as the community, the school resource officer, you know, that's another point where we're talking about community engagement at a younger level. And I'm not so sure that, you know, these are things for future budgets. Code enforcement would be part of that. You know, do we have a budget in the next two to three years that's going to be able to afford another enforcement officer and is that the direction we want to go? But so this is more long-term when we have more budget space or if we do, if we choose to go that route. And the transparency and communications, I think we're getting better at that. But it's always, communications is always something that creates the biggest rift with the community. We always got to try and improve that.
As far as wayfinding and signage, you know, we have three main entrances to our town. You know, we got the West End on 169, which that one's, you know, we could put a sign out there, it would make sense right on 69.
Right.
You know, this way to downtown. You go to the east end of 169, I mean, we're in Savage before, you know, the thing splits, so how do we do that? And then coming across the river, we've got an idea on that, so, you know, we're working on that. Use of committees, yeah, I think, you know, we want to rein them in a little bit, but we want to give them a little, you know, if they come up with a good idea, throw it to us and let's see what we, you know, what we think of it. Code enforcement, I'm, I'm not a fan of selective enforcement. I mean, but it's a real touchy subject with me. And I'll leave it at that. As transparency and communications, yeah, I think we're doing pretty good there. The school resource officer and the training, I don't know if any of you have gone to the Rotary Book giveaway that's coming up for, I think it's second graders.
First grader.
The cops are up there and the kids just love it. I mean, I was up there last year and they, you know, it's just a fantastic deal. They get to be one-on-one with a cop, getting a book and, you know, they shake hands or whatever. And it's a great time for the little guys and it's, it's a good chance for them to, you know, meet somebody that they don't have to be afraid of. Community engagement, neighborhood group activities, I just find so many people in this town are just so disengaged, they're disconnected. Unless something bad happens, they're not going to say anything. You know, we need to get them involved before that, you know, because then it's too late. And as far as the Southbridge Fire Partnership, I'm very hesitant to go into a, you know, we'll have to see where that one shakes out, but, you know, when you get two entities of this size that go together, it can get real hairy. So we just need to be careful on that one.
I want to go farther on the wayfinding signs and not, I don't mean the signs that public works can put up to say city parking that way, which are, which are good.
Right.
I think what Jay's talking about in my mind is more of like a kiosk because I don't think you can say a whole lot on a little sign to explain and maybe a picture of what this car is and stuff like this.
It's generalized more, but...
And the same with, you know, the old Keelon area and the old Brickyard and, and place out across Memorial Park and burial grounds for that matter. So I think that's a bigger topic than just wayfinding signs.
It's almost separate.
And I, and I, like I said, I don't want to see us, you know, throwing a million dollars of taxpayer money at this, but I, I agree with Jay, it would be nice to get it done. So I think we need to figure out a way to try to steer that to where it's not four layers of government trying to do one thing to where we can steer it to where it belongs.
Maybe there's brands out there.
Well, I mean, I, we've got, like I said, we've got the County Historical Society in the middle of Shakopee, a couple of blocks away from here. I mean, you, you think there's some kind of a...
Way to tell, well, that, you know, when we talk about the downtown infrastructure plan and, you know, if you can continue to build on that sense and if we can get them to stop, get out of their car, and then you have one of those kiosks in point, because I've been in towns where they have, you know, hey, I don't know, I don't know where I am because I'm new in the town and I, oh, look at all the cool stuff, go over here, go over there and, and, you know, it's like in the mall where the stores...
I'm thinking the, the trail system that takes you around with...
The, yep.
Cars and locations.
Exactly.
You are here kind of thing.
Right. Well, we got one of those down there in the West End, but we need a couple more.
Where you've got the Plexiglas cover over the thing behind it and every couple of years you unscrew it and you put a new thing in there, updated and...
Yep, exactly.
You know, something that doesn't cost a lot of money.
Mr. Reynolds?
I was just going to say, you know, this is something that I said last year, we totally fell off. We did not get, this is the one thing we didn't address whatsoever last year. And a lot of that was...
You got some of the signs up down here.
Well, yeah, yeah, the parking signs. But the, the concept is essentially is to bring you several different types of, of signage and then figure out what it is that you want to see. You know, my former city of Pensacola, Florida has just done a tremendous job. I think, Jay, you were down there recently.
Some of my canon ideas came...
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's the oldest city in America, regardless of what St. Augustine, Florida says. But anyway, the, the whole point is, is that, you know, it's a very historical city in and of its own right and they've done a really good job with their signage and, but there are all kinds of different types of signage and, and what they're doing may not necessarily be right for Shakopee. But that being said, you know, our plan is to bring several different things forward for you to look at. We already have partnership with the tribe, at least in some part, because they have given us $10,000 for the way signage down in the Memorial Park area, so...
Right, yeah, okay. I'm sorry.
Bill?
Mayor?
Mike?
One thing on the wayfinding or the, the signage for the major entrances, we got to make sure we don't make the mistake we did downtown here where you can't read it because you're going too fast. You know, out there, we got a 55 mile an hour speed limit, we better put a sign that can be read at 70.
No, and I agree and, you know, I think that downtown sign is very cool, but I agree. Even almost the one that we have on the east end there by Memorial Park that says Historic Shakopee, you know, that, because you are coming from 55 and then you're slowing down as you come to the bridge with the, that sign. You know, I'm a sign watcher, if I can't, you know, I need to see it. And you need to see it before you buy it.
Right.
So you can go, oh, yeah, and it kind of connects and, and you get a, you know, know where you are and kind of know where you're going, so, Jay?
Can we separate these a couple of times and maybe, and I hate to add more lists, but a monument, monument sign might be one on the miscellaneous projects and then a historic signage and then wayfinding might be a separate. I think all are important, but all are a little bit different and so we don't confuse them when we're talking about them.
All right. Well, we have worked through this workshop pretty well. If we're complete here, I, I want to thank Bill Reynolds for these questions here, these six questions he put out. And the real, the, kind of the premise question up above, I thought were, for me, pretty thought-provoking. I thought it generated a lot of good discussion here at the council. It made me really think about our community, what I like, and draw on our experiences of where we've been and as you travel around. So thank you, Bill Reynolds. Anything else? If not, Kathy?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to March 21st, 1917, or 2017th at 7:00 PM.
Go back to 1917.
I know 1917.
Second, and we'll thank Nate because we know he's the, he's the action and brains behind all of that.
He's the brains on the action.
We got all, a lot of staff here to thank if we do.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn.
We forgot Darren, sorry. He's the money behind that, bringing the action.
Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned here at 7:53. Here at, uh, seven fifty-three.